I am not Terry Merritt. I am Taft Mattney, Mayor of Pro Tem, sitting in for the mayor tonight. And it is seven o'clock on the nose on November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Want to welcome you all to tonight's regular Malden City Council meeting. Mr. Allgood, I believe you have the invocation and the pledge.
Yes, sir. If you so choose, bow with me. Heavenly Father, as we gather here before you on this eve, we come together full of hearts of gratitude. We thank you for the gift of life, for the warmth of family, the strength of friendships, and the blessings of good health. Lord, we express our deepest appreciation for the dedicated employees of Malden who tirelessly work for the betterment of our community, grant them wisdom and strength in their endeavors. In this season of thanks, may we be reminded of the importance of unity, compassion, and understanding as we discuss matters that impact our city. Guide us with your wisdom. May our decisions reflect the spirit of gratitude that fills our hearts. In your holy name, we pray. Amen. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Lieutenant McCord. Well, and I don't know if I'm doing this on behalf of the city of Malden or behalf of the class of nineteen ninety-one at Malden High School. Oh, no, I have other things to say, too. Whereas Chris McCord retired on October twenty-sixth after twenty-five years of service to the citizens of the city of Malden. And whereas, and it says, Mr. McCord, Lieutenant McCord graduated from Malden High School, Greenville Technical College, and completed the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy, along with numerous trainings to become a lieutenant with the Malden Police Department. And whereas Lieutenant McCord has served with distinction, the city of Malden, the citizens of Malden, as a lieutenant for more than three years after previously serving as the communications sergeant. And whereas Lieutenant McCord was responsible for overseeing the daily operations of the city's dispatch operations and police I T for fifteen years, having significantly assisted in the city's rapid expansion. And whereas Lieutenant McCord dedicated his life to his profession and the protection of the city's citizens and businesses. And whereas Lieutenant McCord has served as an example of devotion and loyalty for others to follow. Now, therefore, I, Terry Merritt, not me, Mayor of the City of Malden, South Carolina, joined by the City Council of the City of Malden, do hereby recognize and congratulate Chris McCord on his retirement and thank him for his dedicated and outstanding service to our community. And witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand this twentieth day of November, twenty twenty-three. Signed, Terry Merritt, Mayor. Congratulations, brother. Many, many years ago. Yeah. Many, many years ago, I had a problem with my foot. There appeared, I had lead in my shoe, apparently. And I'm rolling down two seventy-six, about to hit three eighty-five, when all of a sudden I have a Malden City police vehicle passing in the opposite direction. Then I see that police vehicle slam on its brakes. Then I see that police vehicle do a U-turn in the median. And I think to myself, how far can I get? But I pulled over. And all of a sudden, while I'm sitting there in my vehicle, windows rolled down, my hands on the steering wheel. I hear a voice. Do you want me to shoot you now, or you want me to wait? I can't say in polite company the things that were running through my head at the time. However, I looked over to my left, and I saw my dear friend that I had graduated high school with just a few years before. I can't tell you, number one, this is a bittersweet night, because I hate to see him leave. I miss him as a person. I miss him as a police officer. He is my friend. And brother, I am eternally grateful for your friendship, as well as what you have meant to this community. And Ms. King, I will. Malden Police Department Lieutenant Chris McCord, with honor and recognition for your loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Malden, in recognition of his twenty-five years of hard work and dedication, we wish you all the best in your retirement, July thirteenth, nineteen ninety-eight, to October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Congratulations.
Thank you to the family for sharing Chris with us. I know it's not easy being a family and spouse of law enforcement, so thanks to all of y'all. I haven't known Chris quite since prior to nineteen ninety-one. But we shared some, some good memories and some laughs the last several years, and it's just an honor and a privilege to get to know Chris, and I wish you nothing but the best, as I stated earlier tonight. I am on my second career, so there is life after career number one. I just hope that, you know, life brings you much, much joy with the four-legged babies at home, right? Taft mentioned in polite company, probably shouldn't share this story, but I will. I told Chris earlier, I said, your name comes up often in conversations I have about serving on council, because Chris was our former I T guy, and before he got this fancy equipment, he ran our cameras for us. So there's been a couple of times, everyone that knows me knows that I do not have a poker face, and it's written all over my face. So Chris has told me several times, well, I went to zoom in on you, and I was like, oh, no, I can't zoom in yet, because it was all over my face. So for that, my friend, I thank you as well.
Thank y'all. Thank you for this. Twenty-five years, I mean, it came, went a lot faster than I could have ever imagined. The city's been great to me. I appreciate everybody here. And, you know, with Tab coming in as captain, Cindy here, myself, you, you know, we just about had a modern reunion, but I can't thank y'all enough for everything. Over the years, I've learned so much from the city of Malden. I've enjoyed my time, many, many, many council meetings up here, many Monday nights. But just thank y'all. I can't say I wouldn't change anything. I enjoyed it. At least I didn't shoot you.
Arson. For the record, Ms. Kuzner is attending by Zoom. Our second presentation tonight is the audit presentation from Michael Slapnick with Scott and Company.
Good evening. Oh, it's pretty loud. Michael Slapnick with Scott and Company, where your CPA firm performed your audit fiscal year twenty-three. Appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on this annual report. Very pleased to give you a very positive report. And this is our second year of a new five-year contract, where we previously had done your audit from two thousand eight to two thousand thirteen. And I have with me our audit manager, Amanda Hawkins. She's going to do some of the presentation as well. First, the city is in very solid financial condition. You added approximately one point two million dollars to your general fund but balance in two thousand twenty-three. And that was with a combination of conservative budgeting, closely managing expenses, and having increased revenue sources, mostly as COVID restrictions continue to be lifted during this year. And we'd like to thank the entire accounting staff, particularly Holly, Jennifer, Sandra, for all their hard work on the audit. I mean, audit's not an easy thing to go through, and just because the audit's going on doesn't mean their day-to-day responsibilities cease. And so they have a very strong grasp on your financials, and we very much working with all of you. Why are you sitting so far back there, anyway? Now, since this report, which we call the ACTFR, the ACFR, is a hundred and twenty-page report, I will briefly review just some of the highlights. First of all, congratulations on receiving the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for last year, fiscal year twenty-two. That requires that the city go way ahead of what is required to compile a financial report for the council and your citizens that is most comprehensive and makes the city finances much more transparent. We do anticipate submitting the ACFR for two thousand twenty-three for the award, and we would anticipate for sure receiving the award again. And our audit report, which is really what you're paying us for, begins on page seven of the ACFR. And I direct you to the second paragraph, which states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Malden, South Carolina, as of June thirty, twenty-three, and the respective changes in your financial position and where applicable cash flows thereof for the year ended in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." Just like to remind you, council members, that something you already know, but this is the highest level of assurance that we can provide, that those numbers are fairly stated. But keep in mind that we do not audit every single transaction you have for the year. If we did, the audit would still be going on. It'd be a lot more expensive. But as you know, we audit the samples to take assurance that the population as a whole is fairly stated. So the next part of the ACFR starts on page ten. It's called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And I always encourage council members and folks to read that section if you read nothing else in the document, because this is meant to be a layman's terms description of how your year was financially. It's written by management, and our responsibility is simply to read it and determine that it is consistent with the information that we did audit. So encourage you to read that. One key in that, key item in the M D N A is the discussion of the ARPA funds that were received, the A R P A. And approximately twelve point seven million money was received from federal government the previous two years. And that trigger was called a single audit, since the city recognized approximately four point seven million dollars of that revenue in fiscal year twenty-three. That exceeds the threshold of seven hundred fifty thousand, which triggers a single audit. Heard enough of me. I'm gonna let Amanda talk to you for a little while.
Thank you. On page twenty-four, it starts the government-wide financials, which reports the city's numbers similar to how a business reports its financial statements. The statement of net position is like the balance sheet, and the city reported approximately ninety-five point nine million in total assets and deferred outflows at June thirtieth. Total liabilities and deferred inflows for the year were approximately forty-four point four million, which leaves fifty-one point five million in net position. Page twenty-five is the statement of activities, which is like an income statement and reports the city's revenues and expenses. The total increase in net position for the year was approximately nine point seven million. Page twenty-six begins the fund-level financial statements. The city's general fund reported total assets of approximately twenty-seven point seven million at June thirtieth, total liabilities and deferred inflows of fifteen point nine million, and a fund balance of eight, eleven point eight million, of which eight point six million is unassigned. Page twenty-nine is the fund-level income statement. The general fund reported total revenues of twenty point one million, total expenditures of thirteen point four million, and total other financing uses of five point five million for a net increase of in fund balance of one point two million. Pages thirty-two through thirty-four are the enterprise fund statements, which account for the sewer and property management funds. The enterprise fund balance sheet is healthy and has a total current assets exceeding total current liabilities by approximately three point one, three, three to one. Page thirty-five begins the footnotes to the financial statements, which just explains everything in more detail of the financial statements. There are no new significant footnotes added this year. There was a new pronouncement, GAZBIE ninety-six, which is subscription-based I T arrangements, or SABITAS, as they're called, and the city did not have any that qualified as SABITAS. Also of significance in the footnotes is the capital asset note. Total capital assets increased significantly, approximately by eighteen million. Capital asset additions included construction of the fire station headquarters, the pedestrian bridge, sewer system rehabilitation costs, and some donated capital assets of approximately a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. There was no new debt issued in fiscal year twenty-three, and the city paid down its existing debt by approximately one point seven million in the fiscal year. After the notes, there's required supplementary information that provides further detailed information about the financial statements. In particular, it has budget to actual information about the city's funds. And the general, general fund was budgeted to increase by eighty thousand, and as previously discussed, it had a one point two million surplus. The final section is the statistical section, which provides a variety of information from a statistical standpoint. The unique characteristic of this section is the schedules provide information for the past ten years, as opposed to only the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, which enables the reader to pick up on certain trends that are occurring in the city's financials. I'll pass it back to Michael.
All right, so that's a hundred and twenty-page-long report in a nutshell. We didn't take too much of your time up here today. Just in closing, I want to begin where I started and just say congratulations on a very successful financial year. We believe there are a few cities in the state that will have as good a report as the city of Malden has gotten for this year, so congratulations. Now we'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Does anyone have any questions or comments for our audit team? Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for being here, and we appreciate your work. I will tell you, so in, in college, auditing was quite literally the only class I hated with a passion. Hated it. So I understand, not intimately, but understand there's a lot of background work that goes into preparing these, but the biggest thing that I'd say is what Mr. Slapnick was talking about is this was unqualified, which is certainly good. It's not like your brain surgeon, where you want them to be qualified. Unqualified here is really good. So thank you to Holly. Thank you for all of the staff that does such a good job for our city, and I think also just council working together and planning well and managing what is our fiduciary duty well and trying to do a great job for our citizens. To Mr. Slapnick's point, that's done through this body's leadership. So just thank you to my colleagues and Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other questions, comments?
Sir Mattney, I just can't let Michael go with the audit comment, because you're either tax or audit, and we were speaking earlier, and they were asking me an audit question. I said, I don't know, I'm tax. But seriously, thank you, guys, for the time that you put in to make sure that our city is that we're doing what we're supposed to do. We all trust Holly and know that she's got a history of being very conservative for the city of Malden, and we appreciate her for that. So, and we appreciate you guys. Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
And with that, we will say thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
We will read all about the rest of the meeting when we come back and look at the minutes last, next year. So thank you. Look forward to coming back.
All right, that brings us to reading and approval of minutes. What do I hear on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three?
Motion to approve as submitted.
We have a motion to approve as submitted. Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved as presented. Now we're moving to the special call meeting, minutes of November sixth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve as submitted.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Meeting minutes are approved. That brings us to our first public comment period. There are two public comment periods. This one is for items on the agenda. Speakers have up to three minutes. Did we have anybody signed up? Do we have anybody who wants to speak on items on the agenda this evening? All right, then we will have the second portion with items not on the agenda at the end of the meeting. Report from our city administrator, Mr. Duncan.
Good evening, sir. Hope everyone's having a great Monday. I have a few items I wanted to go over, especially now that we're approaching the holiday season, the most wonderful time of the year. I'm sure that's copyrighted, and I'm going to get in trouble for that, so we'll just keep going. But I just do want to let everyone know about all the great holiday activities we have coming up here in the city of Malden. To start things off right, we will open the holiday season with the Malden Merry, Malden Merry Christmas, starting at five P M. on Thursday, November thirtieth. The event is scheduled to last until eight P M., and will feature live musical performances, pictures with Santa, train rides, food trucks, a holiday market, and of course, our tree lighting ceremony. We hope everyone can join us for this fun filled evening. Next up is the annual breakfast with Santa organized by the Greater Malden Chamber of Commerce. This event will be held starting at nine A M. at the Ray Hopkins Senior Center on Saturday, December second. A few tickets are still available for purchase for this very unique experience. For more information for tickets, we ask that people please call the Malden Chamber of Commerce at eight six four two nine seven one three two three. And we're not done on, on the second. We actually have, after sharing pancakes with Santa, our annual Christmas parade, which will kick off at two P M. on Saturday, December second, as well. The parade will begin at Malden High School and end at the Malden Cultural Center. The parade is hosted by the Greater Malden Chamber of, Greater Malden Chamber of Commerce. And there's still time to submit your parade entry form if you wish to participate. You can access the form from one of our websites, or excuse me, one of our webpages on the Malden Cultural Center's website. The Malden Theater Company will be back on the stage at the Malden Cultural Center the first and second weekends of December. This music review will feature some of the best singers in the upstate, ready to bring on the holiday cheer. Tickets are on sale now at maldenculturalcenter.org. No holiday season would be complete without the musical delight of the Malden City Singers Community Choir, directed by Ms. Pam Mayfield. You are all invited to join in the holiday spirit and enjoy the festival choral music ranging from traditional to complimentary music. Tickets are on sale now for all three performances on December sixteenth and seventeenth, and that was an amazing performance last year. I hope everyone can turn out. Lastly, the city will gather at Veterans Memorial on the grounds of the Malden Cultural Center on Saturday, December sixteenth at eleven A M. For our annual Wreaths Across America program, we hope that folks can join us and over two million volunteers and supporters across the nation as we gather to remember the fallen, honor those who serve, and teach the next generation of the value of freedom. Special thank you to County Council Chairman Dan Tripp for supporting the, the event with the purchasing of wreaths and Terry Merritt for all his organizational efforts for this event. And lastly, just as a reminder, city offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holidays. This will impact sanitation collection this week, as crews will not be collecting sanitation on our usual schedule. Those with Thursday routes will be picked up on Monday, and Friday's routes will be picked up on Tuesday of next week. And that's my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Any questions for the administrator? All right, now we're going to move on to our reports from standing committees. Finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items. One was obviously the audit report was all good news, and we appreciated that, as we stated. The second one was a document that Mr. Our city administrator handed to me right before we got up here. I did want to comment on and read this. This was for the our popular annual financial report qualifies G F O A's Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award. We actually received, Ms. Abercrombie received a special medallion for this, which signifies the Special Triple Crown Medallion, recognizing that your government received all three G F O A awards, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Award, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and the Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award. So this is the kind of thing, actually, that when all the finance directors get together, this is the kind of thing she's showing off, is this Triple Crown Medallion. So certainly, we appreciate Ms. Abercrombie and her staff, and I know I said it a minute ago, but this kind of recognition doesn't come just from these chambers. It's coming from beyond these chambers, and certainly should give us a comfort in how our city's run, so. All good things from Finance and Policy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Public Safety, Ms. King.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Public Works, Mr. Krailing.
It is leaf season, if you haven't noticed, and our Public Works folks are very busy, so please be patient with them. They have a lot of leaves to pick up. I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Krailing. Nothing from E P D. Building Codes, Ms. Kuzner. You're muted unless you have no comment. Seth, are we getting anything from her?